Please join me in observing a moment of silence. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. I'd ask if you have a cellphone, please silence it or turn it off. Mr. Migno, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Clark, Reed, Smith, Lawler, Spicer, Williamson, and Mayor Edgerton.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Are there any changes, corrections, or additions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda as is, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Okay. Our first presentation is a proclamation welcoming our distinguished sister city visitor, Chef Frederick... Chef Frederick. Okay.
It's a proclamation welcoming Chef Frederick Therry, French sister city visitor. Whereas France and the United States share a long and proud history as allies with a mutual passion of one of those culture, food, and wine, and whereas the educational, social, and culture exchanges achieved through the longstanding sister city relationship between Albion and French cities have become a source of great joy and pride on both sides of the Atlantic. And whereas nearly 1,000 people have traveled back and forth between our cities coming together to celebrate the importance of a continued commitment to a more peaceful and enlightened future through people-to-people exchanges. And whereas local families from each community volunteer host families, thus enabling visitors the unique opportunity to truly immerse themselves into the daily life within a country. And whereas more than 200 young adults from Albion have experienced the benefits of more travel, including greater self-confidence, greater cultural sensitivity, improved problem-solving skills, enhanced creativity. And whereas Chef Frederick Therry has once again traveled from our sister city's region to Albion and graciously shared his talents to demonstrate the art of French cuisine during a series of demonstrations and meal preparations in Albion. And whereas this example of culture exchange between our two nations will impart a lasting impression of goodwill and measurable value. Now therefore, I, Dave Atchison, Mayor of Albion, on behalf of our entire city, do hereby extend our warmest welcome to Chef Frederick.
Hello to everyone. Je me nomme Frédéric Therry. Therry. J'habite au château de Nantoye dans le vall de Loire, France. So I will continue in English.
Thank you.
Now. The presentation wasn't... So I was very happy to come two years ago with the SISTIC, to organize a week of cooking here with the SISTIC Committee from Bahia, joined to the SISTIC Committee of Albion, and it was very successful. And I was quite honest when Diane called me two months ago to come back. So... So, and I was very pleased to come back and to organize, to try to explain the differences between the French cuisine and the way of eating in America. And so the exchanges with the young in Albion College and in the schools, and they were quite funny. And it will be many rememberings for me, and also organizing that special dinner in the My Label Brewery. And so I thank you for all that, and I hope to come back. Because now I think Albion is really in my heart. So I wanted to say also that my chateau, it will be, I will, in 2021, celebrate the centenary of owning the place by my family. So you will be all the welcome at my chateau in the summer. I've planned already to do an exhibition of painting with Michael Dixon. And probably also with a travel agency in Chicago. So many thanks to you all, and I hope to be back soon.
All right. 2020 census, Aaron Geyer. If I mispronounced your name, my apologies.
No, you said it right. So I work at Harrington Elementary School, and I come representing them. The last three years since it reopened, since the annexation, we've grown roughly by a class size every year, going from the low 200s now up to about 275. This year, we have three kindergarten rooms, as well as a readiness kindergarten room, all full. You know, over, or about 22 apiece, give or take, right now. As we grow, we're looking for new ways to support our students, and one of the big pushes this year is we want the census, we want to do what we can to make the census as accurate as possible since it really affects our budget because of title funding. So in 2010, I looked it up, there were 8,616 people who were counted in Albion. 16.2% were five-year-olds to 18-year-olds, so those demographics who would be school age. Each of those students, depending on the designation of the district, as far as rural or urban, earn the district or allow the district to receive at least $1,000, if not more. So those students in 2010 equated to about $1.3 million for the district. So every student, every person counts in a major way because the amount of programming that we can offer with $1.3 million is, I can't even wrap my head around it as a teacher, and I have all the ideas of how we could help students. So what I wanted to find out is kind of twofold. One, as a school, what can we do? What's the city's plan as far as promoting, organizing, and really making sure that the census is accurate and is taken as smoothly and accurately as possible? And what can the school do to help with that, since there's a decent portion of the population who's in and out of our doors every day, anyway? And then the other part of that was in helping with the census and partnering with you to help with the census. We want to also begin a community partnership. As we've started with United Way, as we are growing our numbers, we're trying to find new and innovative ways to help our students. So like last year, the United Way helped us send a book every week to every student in our school over the summer for nine weeks, which was no small feat. And then actually, a single woman kind of did that all on her own, and she's wonderful. But it would be amazing if, you know, she got some help, or, you know, and that could continue because we definitely saw gains in those children that read over the summer because for a lot of our kids, that isn't a reality, and they don't do that. So my main purpose is the census, but also the underlying partnership.
Okay. Questions by council? Yes?
If I could just respond real quick. The mayor and I have had some discussions about how to, how the city can get involved to help make sure we have an accurate census count. And I'm so glad you're here tonight because I think, I think if you could, Mayor, if it's okay, if I ask that you get in touch with the mayor again and contact the Chicago office of the U.S. Census Bureau. The U.S. Census Bureau does provide for the establishment of local complete count committees for each community. So local people can get involved to make sure that the census is as accurate as possible. And they have a whole list of resources available to help make that happen, and they will also provide assistance in making that happen.
Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Public comments this evening on agenda items? Always welcome.
Levita Weeks, 917 Luther Drive. At the last council meeting, no one wanted to take the position of Mayor Pro Tem. I would like to suggest that Al Smith consider taking the position as Mayor Pro Tem. I know he was hesitant in taking the position because he's new to the council. But Al, I don't know anyone as more committed and dedicated to Albion and its constituents than you are. So I would like to ask you to consider accepting the position of Mayor Pro Tem if nominated.
Hi, I am Pat Wilson. I came to the meeting because of Aaron's name being on the agenda, speaking about the census. I am the Calhoun County Recruiting Assistant through the Lansing office via the Chicago office of the 2020 census. I did look up some statistics today. So my job is to, twofold. One is to encourage people to apply online for census-taking positions, and also to promote the census, give people some awareness of what is happening. First off, I did look up the statistics for Calhoun County and specifically Albion. Let's see, countywide, we currently have 359 applicants out of 673 that we're looking for. Albion is divided into four different tracts. The southeast area of Albion has the lowest number of applicants so far. We have simply nine applicants for 50 positions. So that's 17% is all we have there. The southwest area has 10 applicants for 22 positions. Northwest has 12 of 39. Northeast has 14 of 36. So right now, we have 45 applicants for 145 positions. So one of my things, and I have this in all different sizes, is I have yard signs, I have like 3x4 cards, I have 7x11 sheets of paper that I'm trying to spread not only in this community, but countywide. So I just, oh, and then, okay. As far as the jobs, they will pay at minimum of $18 an hour. They will be flexible hours, paid weekly with paid training. Most of the work will take place during April and May because April 1st will be the deadline to reply to the census. Only those people who don't reply have their doors knocked on, asking them for a response. Census this year is nine questions. It is the shortest census ever. And so I wanted to bring that up. If you or anyone you know is interested in applying for a job, I have cards with the website on them. The other aspect of it is the awareness. And 80% of the households will receive a postcard this year in March that will say, "Please go online and answer these nine questions." I don't know exactly what that postcard looks like, I have not seen it. So one of the aspects of that is, all of you, please don't throw away your postcards when you get it. It's like imperative that people understand they are getting a big envelope of a form to send back this year. 20% of the populace will receive a form. But that's a random, I mean, there isn't any distinction of who's getting a form versus a postcard. So we need to build that awareness. And I have spoken with Aaron about some things that I can do with Harrington School in terms of not only building the awareness of the jobs, but also potentially providing public computer access because some people who get postcards will say, "I can't reply. I don't have the internet." So I'm identifying public computer sites, such as the library, and I now understand Harrington has some as well. Any questions that immediately come to mind about census? Yes. Thank you. Do as many as you want, I have a car for it.
Do you have promotional materials, like posters or public service announcement stuff?
I have yard signs that are like that, and I have a couple of different papers, one that are these size, one is more a poster booked up somewhere. The other one is information about what you can do for your community, you know, how your organization can help. If you're in any groups that are having meetings, I know most of the meetings this month are booked, but I am booking into January for the same type of "Apply for Jobs" and "Watch for That Postcard." Would you like me to drop something off to you?
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
So by when would you want people to let you know that they're going to apply?
People can just go online and apply. I will see the statistics as they, that's how I knew how many applicants we had. That's a statistical database that I can get into and find out. So they don't need to let me know personally. But we are taking applicants now and starting to schedule training shortly after the first year. Like I say, it will be paid training, flexible hours, and $18 to $20 an hour.
So just for clarification, if we have a local complete count committee, should that committee be working with you then, or coordinating with you?
Yeah, I would want, certainly want to work in partnership with the complete count committee. I know that Cindy, I will mispronounce her name at the library.
Stan Zick.
Stan Zick.
Stan Zak.
Stan Zak. Stan Zak. I knew you would know who I meant. She has expressed an interest in being on a complete count committee. I myself can't organize that, but I know that she's interested. She has promotional materials there. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have one item on the consent calendar, and that's approval of regular session minutes for December 2nd, 2019. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor of approval of regular session minutes for December 2nd, 2019, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, they are approved. Okay, first item for discussion is the election of the Mayor Pro Tem. May I have my motion?
So moved.
I need to have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, motion.
That's okay. Councilwoman Reed.
I move that Al Smith be Mayor Pro Tem. I've talked to Al the other day, really not so much about, but I'm finding out that he knows a lot. He has a lot of good ideas about things that would make Albion progress. And I just really think that he's the other person.
So there's a motion nominating Al Smith for Mayor Pro Tem. May I have a second? I'll second the motion. Okay, discussion. Go ahead, Councilwoman Reed.
Well, just like I was saying, in talking with him about some things about the city and hopes for the city and stuff, I think he has some really good ideas. He's capable of running meetings. He's very active in the community. I was talking to some more people who were in need of food supplies and things. And I guess, you worked with the food helpers. But anyway, they said this man, Al Smith, bought to our house for us. So, you know, I really think that Al is a good person for this position. So that when you're not here, not saying you're not a good person, we could have somebody to take your place and do the trip.
Okay, Councilman Williamson.
Well, I was not, I did not have the luxury of being at the last council meeting. I was on a cruise ship with the mouse, which was a lot more fun than council, but I'm sorry to have missed it. I actually, before the last meeting, I was very supportive of Councilwoman Clark taking the position of Mayor Pro Tem. Very upset that she does not want that position, nor do many other folks on council. But I had individually had mentioned to, I think, almost every single member except for Ms. Reed on council that I had an interest in taking the position, having now a year under my belt on council, knowing how to run meetings myself as well, being pretty active in the community, and also having been a very flexible vote on council when it comes to many different things that come before us in a year. And so I just wanted to express that I'm not necessarily against Al taking it because he would be great for it. I was hoping that I would also be nominated this evening to fill that spot, having earned the trust and respect of my colleagues on council.
Any other comments? Councilman Smith.
During a meeting of my precinct the other night, I was asked by the members of my precinct, if nominated, to please take the nomination. As I said during my campaign, I am here to represent the wishes of my precinct. So by their wishes, I will accept the nomination. However, let that take nothing away from Councilman Williamson, as he would also be very good at this position. So we have a tough decision to make, I believe.
Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you. Are we just talking about Councilmember Smith? Or are we just talking in general of who we want to nominate?
Well, I was going to ask a question, if there's any other member of, I asked it two weeks ago, and no one who was here was willing to serve. So if you have somebody else, just as a general comment, that we can see, hear from everybody, and then if somebody wants to amend the nomination, or as is, we'll vote.
So I would like to nominate Councilmember Williamson also.
Okay.
So I guess we have a second.
Well, do you have any other, any other comments other than you supporting too, apparently?
Yep, I do.
Councilwoman Spicer.
Thank you. Two weeks ago, we were here and all of us except Councilwoman Williamson, Councilwoman Williamson, and none of us wanted it at that time. And I was informed that, and in fact, Councilmember Clark nominated Councilwoman Williamson in his absence. And so, and I certainly supported that nomination. So tonight, I was of the opinion that Councilwoman Williamson would be nominated because I support him being Mayor Pro Tem. So it's nothing against Councilmember Smith. It's just that I think Councilmember Williamson, being on council longer, being on different boards in the city, including the school board, and his knowledge and rapport with the council would make him an excellent Mayor Pro Tem.
City Attorney Hartness.
Just as a matter of parliamentary procedure, so that things don't get a little mucky, I think you've got a motion and a second for Councilmember Smith. I think you need to either dispose of that motion, or if the council chooses to amend it before doing another motion for a different member.
Yeah, we're not doing another motion, just have a discussion.
All right, just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Thank you for clarifying that. Any other comments by council? Okay, so the current motion before us is Al, Councilman Smith has been nominated, that's been seconded. Does any, do you wish to amend your motion?
No.
So, Mr. Migno, if you would read the roll?
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Lawler.
No.
Spicer.
No.
Williamson.
No.
And Mayor Edgerton.
Yes. Okay, so the count is three to three. Okay. May I have another motion? Councilman Lawler.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Councilmember Williamson for the Mayor Pro Tem position. Hoping we pick somebody tonight because I don't want to go to jail.
Second.
We're not going to get...
I see Mr. Gilbert over here, and I'm a little nervous.
No, we haven't violated the charter in any way.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so it's removed and seconded, is there further discussion? Mr. Migno, would you read the roll?
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Mayor Edgerton.
Yes. Okay, congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem. You do the oath now?
Oh, we didn't begin, I'm sure.
Just be a raise your right hand, we'll be there after me.
Don't you guys got the comeback?
If you're an girlfriend, that embarrassed me.
Whichever way you want to do it, let's get it done, because we've got a bunch of ass.
It's the only way you can get a good picture.
I am Shane Blanston.
I am Shane Blanston.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support
That I will support
the Constitution
the Constitution
of the United States
of the United States
and of the state
and of the state
and that I will
and that I will
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
faithfully and impartially
faithfully and impartially
discharge the duties
discharge the duties
of the city of Albion
of the city of Albion
Mayor Pro Tem
Mayor Pro Tem. So, so help me God.
Got choked up there.
No, I got frogged up there.
Next item is a request approval of Resolution 201939, fiscal year 2020 budget appropriation. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Your support?
Support.
Okay, discussion. City Manager McClear, would you like to present the budget to us, please?
Your Honor, the general fund budget represents a general fund revenues of approximately $4.6 million and expenditures of of $4.7 million. We also have the general revenue funds, which revenues total $4.2 million, expenditures $3.4 million, debt service funds, 261,000, almost 262,000 in revenues, 257,000 in expenditures. Our enterprise funds, $2.2 billion in revenue, $2.7 million in expenditures. Internal service fund, which is our equipment fund, $327,000 in revenue, $343,000 in expenditures. And our other funds, which are basically our TIP funds and revolving loan fund, $798,500 in revenue, and $795,700 in expenditures. And then we have trust and agency funds, $1.5 million in revenue and the, almost the same in expenditures. The budget was prepared in accordance with the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act as required by the state of Michigan. And the council held a budget work session on November 16th, I believe it was, to discuss the budget, review it, and make any desired changes to the budget. You held your public hearing on December 17th. You held your public hearing on December 2nd, and I do not recall that we received any public comments on the budget at that time. Your Honor, I'm happy to answer any other questions council may have.
Questions by council. Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Manager, for that going through and just, I'll be honest with you, I'm the last guy to know anything about a budget. My wife takes care of the books at home, but I did put a calculator to a lot of these differences between revenues and expenditures. Obviously, there are a number of them that do have a minus when you get down to it, such as the sidewalk fund, shows 6,500 revenue and 111,000 expenditures, which is over $104,000 debit or deficit. And a few others, but that being said, the one thing that did strike me is when we get to the back page here, also, which will be part of this resolution, also resolve the attached fee schedule supporting revenue estimates within the budget is approved. So if we approve this budget, we approve a new fee schedule that has never been handed to us, we've never looked at, we've never discussed. So I will vote this down myself.
Just for clarification, the fee schedule is a separate item for discussion on your agenda tonight.
I appreciate that, but sir, it does say in here, in this resolution for the budget, it says, also resolve this attached, the attached fee schedule supporting revenue estimates within the budget is approved. That is not listed as a separate item. So if we approve the budget, we approve the fee schedule without ever having looked it over or discussing it. And there are a number of discrepancies that have been pointed out by my constituents in that fee schedule that I think should be discussed.
My recommendation, Your Honor, would be to strike that, strike that section from the budget adoption resolution, so that we can deal with the fee schedule separately, which is the second, which is the next item on your agenda.
How would you prefer the zone to do that?
Okay, so. So there's an amendment. Well, we'll continue discussing, and we'll see if we have an amended motion, which if there's no other issues in the budget, it simply would be to approve the budget with the as amended to eliminate that clause. Other comments or questions?
So.
Councilwoman Spicer.
Thank you. So if amended relating to the fee schedule, then we would have a resolution at our next meeting approving the fee schedule?
It's on the agenda right after we do this, it's tonight's meeting.
Okay, so we'll approve it separately, okay.
Councilman Williamson.
I'm going to move to amend the current resolution to strike out the fee schedule portion from the budget approval process.
Is there support for the?
Support.
Okay.
I think that for clarity, we did put it on the agenda as a separate item, we should probably discuss it separately, and it makes the budget approval process easier, unless there are any other. I tend to understand the nuances of why there's weird numbers in and out of certain areas that are different, so I don't have a problem with that. So I'm ready to move forward on approving the budget.
Other questions or comments by council? Okay, the motion before us, as amended, is to approve the 2020 budget with the elimination of that clause, which.
With order, we have to vote on the amendment first.
Okay.
So we have to vote, we have to vote. So there's a motion and a second to the amendment, we vote on the amendment, and then we're back to the original motion when we can approve the budget.
Thank you. Mr. Mingo, would you read the roll?
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
And Mayor Edgerton.
Yes. Okay, so the amendment is approved. Are there further questions or comments relating to the budget itself? Seeing none? Mr. Mingo, would you read the roll? This is to approve the 2020 budget as amended.
Councilmember Spicer.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
And Mayor Edgerton.
Yes. Next item is the request approval of the 2020 fee schedule. May I have a motion?
Still moved.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay. Questions or comments by council?
Councilman Smith.
A number of differences between the present fee schedule and what is being presented here have been brought before me by my constituents. One thing I will say that today, I called the City Hall, I talked to four different people, and nobody could come up with a fee schedule that we are presently using. I went online, I looked at our city website, I could find nowhere in there any kind of a fee schedule. I couldn't, I even went to the Parks and Recreation Park and tried to open up an application to rent a park to see what the fees were. It's nowhere in there. How are our citizens supposed to find out what the fees are for anything? The people I talked to downstairs at City Hall today couldn't even tell me what the fees were for anything. So I think we've got an education problem within our realm, and we also have a problem of our people within the city being able to see this on paper. Number two, there are a number of things on here. If we go to page two in the fee schedule, second section down, description cemetery, lot purchase cemetery, columbarium niche, Albion resident, $500. Lot purchase cemetery, columbarium niche, non-resident, $1,000. To my understanding, a columbarium is a type of mausoleum above ground where urns are placed for cremated remains. We are charging fees for a building that we do not have. We do not have a columbarium at Riverside Cemetery. So why do we have them in our fee schedule? And also, we go down a bit further, especially down into the Parks and Recreation. Again, we're almost doubling the fees for pavilion and shelter reservation, resident and non-resident, all the way down for all the different types. Those are being almost doubled on each level. And I believe during the last City Manager's tenure, this was either voted down or was amended after her, after she had left. But the people of my precinct are fairly up in arms about this again, because, you know, I'll be honest with you, outlook around the city, and I don't see a pavilion that I would pay $100 to rent for a day, because there are no facilities to back up a pavilion. All of our picnic tables are left to sit outside over the winter, so they're fairly much useless, or they will fill you with splinters. So I think we need to pick up what we've got at our parks and approve what is there before we start asking people to spend more money for a yield.
Councilwoman Reed.
I'm in total agreement with that. When Mrs. Ruffus was here, she raised those prices, and I told her, it's just like Highland Park, it's a little big pavilion, can't get six tables under it, it's that many. Who wants to pay $100 for that? I agree with you. Right now, I don't see, in our other parks, some of them just have pavilions for even tables. So I really think all of that needs to be taken.
Councilwoman Spicer.
Thank you. Well, I guess I'm looking here, and I guess we are, where is it indicated what the previous? So if there's no change, how do we know what went up and what stayed the same? I guess, I don't know what, yeah, so I mean, I can't, I don't know what we're doing here. I only saw someone mention on one of the internet Facebook sites or something about, did you know that the city is increasing the use of the pavilion from 50 to $100? Well, I don't see what it was before here, so I guess I'd like to know where, what we increased, where the increases occurred, before I can approve a fee schedule, so. Last year was.
Councilman Williamson.
So, not to take this to an even higher level, not to take this to even a higher level, but so we brought this tonight, it was in our packet, and Mr. McClear, maybe you can help shed some light on this. Did you recommend these changes? Is this something you're championing? Did you brought it to council? And I know you have some of your department heads here, but I'm just trying to figure out the coordination of this. And then you have, so, and then the person inside of me says, there might be a good reason to raise some of the rental prices, and I don't know them. I know one of the reasons is it's been forever long, probably more than a decade since we've touched them. But what is the justification? Do you have a presentation on why we're doing a fee schedule like this?
My staff and I had discussions previously about having each department head review and make recommendations on changes to the fees within their departments. To be honest with you, I did not see this until the agenda came out. I wholeheartedly agree with some of the comments that have been made tonight about how we present this fee schedule. We should be seeing what the current adopted fees are, as well as what they're proposing to go to. And I too would like to see it in that format. I would ask that we, I would ask that we table this to the January meeting.
Councilman Williamson.
Okay, I'll make that motion, I will. I want to note that in the future, to prevent this type of confusion, Mr. McClear, it'd be really great if you had a handle on it before it made it to the agenda, and then the confusion builds up over four or five days before we come to a meeting, and then we don't really have the answers, and we table it to take further action. I feel bad for you, I feel bad for councilors who are confused, citizens who are a little upset, and I also have the most feelings for your department heads, who probably work hard and have an explanation for some of this, but aren't going to get any representation tonight, it's just going to be confusion. So with that, I just want to move to table the fee schedule to the next meeting, and hopefully there'll be a more comprehensive presentation.
Can I make a suggestion before you make the?
Well, the motion's been made, may I have a support? Okay, discussion.
Okay, I, okay, I just wanted to say also, in addition to the formatting change, can we also get an extra time probably here for that, next time we address this, an explanation as to why the increase per piece? Because I know, I mean, I understand that, you know, cost of living and cost of maintenance and all that, but for the items that would increase, I'd like an explanation.
So it's been moved and supported. The general consensus appears to move and vote whether we're going to table, but what we need in front of us is what is the current fee schedule, what's it going to be, and an explanation of why there's a change. So, any other discussion? All those in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, request approval Resolution 201940, fiscal year 2019 budget amendments.
Still moved.
Support?
Support.
You wish to have the Finance Director present that?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mead.
Good evening, Finance Director, Tom Mead. Similar to what the City Manager explained in the 2020 budget, we put together some more summary, I guess if you will, for 2019, and what these numbers are going to represent, like we do every year. Obviously, we passed a budget for 19 a year ago. We go through the year, and things change. Sometimes we come in a little higher, sometimes a little lower. When we get to this point where we're looking at the upcoming budget for the future year, we also then, at that point in time, look to see where we're at in the current year, try to address any of the major changes or things that we feel need, you know, if there's going to be significant change one way or another, we make our budget amendments that way. So these numbers would then become our amended, 2019 amended budget. So, and these have all been, on the reports that we presented earlier, these are all the same numbers. There was only one change, I will get to that shortly. But starting out with the general fund, we're looking at revenues of 4.4 million, expenses of 4.5 million. And again, I'm going to remind you, when we do this, auditors are very particular about if we go over budget. So we try to be very conservative when we estimate our expenses. It's kind of hard to do sometimes, because we're putting this together in October or November, you still have a month or two to go, and you may have some big bills that roll in. So we try to estimate a little high, so on the expense side. So having said that, we're looking at an estimated excess of expenses over revenue of $163,878 in general fund. I don't anticipate it being that high, but again, we're trying to be conservative. If you remember, I think we originally approved the budget with about an $86,000 shortfall. It's going to be a little bit higher, potentially could be a little bit higher. We have plenty of money in the fund balance to cover it, so again, it's still considered a balanced budget as far as the state is concerned. Next page, special revenue funds. The one change we did have to make from what we presented to you earlier is Fund 277, Maple Grove. They had talked about putting in a new boiler, they ended up having their boiler die, so they had to kind of do it quicker rather than later. That estimate came in at about 400 and, what was it, 470 some thousand? And they decided also to do some street lighting and stuff out there too. But at any rate, we did have to bump up the estimated expense to 911,000. Now bear in mind, Maple Grove is an odd fund in the sense that MISTA requires them to set money aside every month to cover capital expenditures or capital repairs like this. So even though it shows as a big expense, making it look like it might be a $472,000 loss, it's actually money that is sitting in a bank account specifically designated for capital improvements. So it'll come out of that account, we do have to expense it, but it's not going to hurt their net position at all as far as their fund balance. So having said that, we're looking for special revenue funds, revenues of $5,700,000, expenses Debt service funds below that, revenues $326,000, expenses $321,000. Enterprise funds, revenue $2,420, almost 5,000, expenses $3,046,000. Flipping the page. Internal service fund, revenue $303,000, expenses $363,000. And all other funds, miscellaneous funds, revenue $806,000, expenses $782,000. And the trust funds, revenue $1,675,000, expenses $1,658,000. And in total, whoops, I guess I don't have a total for all. So that is what we anticipate being the amended budget for 2019. Any questions I'd like to?
Seeing no questions, Mr. Mingo, please read the roll. Seeing no questions, Mr. Mingo, please read the roll.
Councilmember Reed. Smith?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Okay. Next item, request approval of the MITN bid system agreements, may I have a motion? Some of, support?
Support.
Okay. City Manager McCleary?
Your honor, members of council, you're being requested to approve the BidNet Direct slash MITN Agreement for Services and related documents to allow the city to participate as a non-voting member in the Michigan Intergovernmental Trade Network, or MITN, purchasing group, and BidNet Direct's web-based solicitation or bidding program. Uh, the web-based, uh, bidding system is a comprehensive software system that permits municipal members to manage vendors, track vendor performance, advertise and distribute bid documents, specifications and other documents, um, evaluate bids, award and manage contracts, and obtain copies of other municipalities' bid specifications and documents. Um, I provided you with, uh, some, uh, background on this matter. Uh, the only cost for us to participate in this, uh, program and to have access to the web-based, uh, bid management system is an initial one hundred and ninety-five dollar, uh, fee. Uh, that fee is to cover the cost for BidNet to, uh, send, uh, information out to local vendors, letting them know that we are participating in the MITN bid system. Uh, there is no other cost, uh, related to, um, participation in this program. Uh, I do want to note that, uh, the city attorney, uh, expressed a concern to me that there was no, uh, expiration date for the contract. Uh, so I would recommend that, um, the motion includes that this contract shall not exceed a term of ten years. Uh, and I would recommend that the term of the agreement be January first, twenty twenty, and expired December thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine.
Okay, questions by council? Councilman Smith?
Uh, pardon me, thank you, sir. Um, I did notice, uh, in reading through the Agreement of Services, uh, under Section Three Payment for Services, uh, even though the one ninety-five is your initial fee, um, there will be other charges of, if we go forward, I guess, participate, not just participating, but using the program, uh, such as, uh, three point one point two mailing fees, three point one point four surplus auction fees, uh, three point two point two purchase group notification services, um, supplies that, or suppliers that choose to register for this value-added service option will be charged a nominal annual subscription fee. Um, just so we do know that there would be other fees coming down the road if we become, I guess, more, more than just lookers, or, you know, we become into participating in this. There looks like there may be other fees.
The, if I could.
Go ahead.
Uh, the only other fee that we could potentially incur, uh, would be if we actually sold surplus, uh, uh, property using the MITN bid system. They charge a five percent fee of the final sale price. That's separate from our purchase of goods and services and equipment. Um, so if we wanted to utilize their public, uh, their public auction service, they would charge a five percent fee. Um, I.
Is that for selling or for buying as well?
That's if we were selling. Um, the subscription service fees don't apply to us, those are for vendors.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions by councilwoman Spicer?
Thank you. So then, is this for, um, all city employees? Or is this specific for you, the city manager? And we have, I guess, help me understand, would we be putting auction, using this as an auction? Putting our surplus material there? Or are we looking at other, um, is it cities or other people's surplus? Help me understand that.
Sure. Uh, great question. Um, this service, uh, let me back up just a little bit. Under the city code, we are required when we are making purchases. If we're purchasing supplies, materials, equipment, um, um, or, I'm sorry.
Services.
Services, um, certain services. Uh, we are required, if it's over a certain dollar limit, we have to competitively bid the purchase of those, uh, items. Uh, this program allows us to utilize the MITN bid system to, uh, to publish our requests for proposals. And it's basically an online bid service. That's for the purchase of materials. Uh, our, the city code says that, uh, any purchase over five thousand dollars must be competitively bid, and contracts for anything over five thousand dollars must be approved by council. That's what the system is. Uh, it allows us to comply with our own bidding requirements. It does provide a service to allow us to sell surplus, uh, equipment or, um, property, personal property. Uh, we may or may not utilize, uh, the MITN bid system to do that. It is a good service to have available, but, uh, but this is mainly for us to comply with our own bidding requirements.
Okay, and, and the fee, the cost is just the one ninety-five?
Just the one ninety-five upfront fee.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions by council? Okay, so the motion before is to approve this, uh, our city manager has referenced a conversation with the city attorney about, uh, no open-ended contracts, need to have a cap on it, and the city manager's recommendation is to limit, is cap it at ten years. Uh, any comments or concerns by council?
Probably, you probably have to amend it.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I move to amend the current resolution to put a ten-year limit beginning on January one, twenty twenty twenty, twenty twenty.
Okay. Is there support? Or, okay. All right. So, the ma- uh, the motion is to amend the original motion to set a ten-year limit starting on, uh, Jan- one January twenty twenty and run for ten years. Okay, all those in favor say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So the amendment's been approved, now our vote on the amended motion, which is to approve, uh, the contract or to subscribe to this with a limit of ten years. All those in, now, we'll do this as a roll call, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Okay. Item G, request approval for Holland Parks, no, I skipped one, I apologize. Discussion, approval of first reading of ordinance twenty nineteen eleven, and ordinance to amend Chapter Two, Article Four, to add Division Five, Sections Two, Two Eighty through Two, Two Eighty-four, Recreation Advisory Commission. Our city attorney has drafted that, it's in the package, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there support? Okay, discussion. I'll ask the city attorney to walk us through. Councilwoman Lawler?
Thank you. Um, can we add in there somewhere that, um, we would like, um, precinct participation? Like everyone choose somebody to be on this committee?
Well, it outlines the, uh, so what would your motion be, to amend the membership requirement?
Sure. However is, can be done, I'll take it.
So if you want to, to, uh, state your motion or how you would want to have this amended, and see if there's support for it, that would make this different than the other commissions that the city has?
Okay, so, I would like to, um, I don't have my paper in front of me, so correct me if I get a little off. Um, to, um, when, just when you're putting this together, that we have, okay. Okay. So, Section Two, Two Eighty-One, under Members, Part B, um, may I, uh, add that the mayor, um, subject that you approve each council member to appoint someone to this, uh, committee? Is that appropriate? So basically, what I'm asking is that you ask each one of us to appoint somebody from our precinct to, um, to be a member of this committee?
Is there support? Is there support for that amendment?
Uh, support, but can.
Okay, so now we'll have discussion.
Okay, thank you. Uh, while the recreation, eh, as written, it says that the advisory committee shall have five members. Um, so then, I guess councilwoman Lawler is suggesting that that be changed to six, because there are six.
Right, but typically you have, not typically, uh, all of the other councils are commissions and boards. It, it's an odd number, so there would be seven, that's not unheard of. Uh, but to, to set this, I'm opposed to that because that would be creating a different set of rules, a different way of doing it for this board opposed to all the other ones. Councilman Williamson.
Yeah, I was, I was, so, I support of increasing the number, uh, of representatives on the committee. I think five is a bit small for something so important as recreation, especially when we're so often for it. Uh, I, I don't want to make this committee or commission separate from the other boards and commissions where we take away the appointment power of mayor, uh, to, to make those appointments. Uh, although I would support it saying, uh, you know, must be comprised of seven members, uh, appointed by the mayor, uh, with special emphasis on represented, representation across all city neighborhoods. I think, I think putting some emphasis there to help the mayor, uh, in making those decisions, especially because this fund involves, uh, children and families and recreation involves special. I think making a special emphasis, but not taking away the one of the few powers we've given the mayor in our city to make appointments, um, that's, that's my suggestion on this. Um, there you go.
Other comments by council? Councilwoman Spicer?
No, I, I think, yeah, I, I, I agree with council, Mayor Williamson. I ju- I just think that, um, yeah, yeah, I agree with that. I just think that we, we don't take away your power, I think, because you have to bring them to council for us to approve. So, if we were to increase the commission, that would be, we'd go from five to seven because, okay, all right, I.
City Attorney Hartman.
So, assuming that that's the direction the council wants to go, what I would suggest is that you, in keeping with the odd number, because you, you want to have a, with any commission, a consensus and the ability to vote and not have a tie, change it per, in, in paragraph, uh, sub-paragraph A of Two Dash Two Eight One, change five in line one to seven. And then, um, in the second to last line, where we talk about the first set of appointments, instead of saying one shall be appointed for a term of one year, say two shall be appointed for a term of one year. And then in the final line, and two for a three-year, for a term of three years, change it to three for a term of three years. And that will, um, account for the additional two commission persons and, and keep the term staggered.
I can support that. Do both of those years again?
Sure. So, in the second to last line, instead of it saying, one shall be appointed for a term of one year, it, it'll read, two shall be appointed for a term of one year. And in the final line, it will say, instead of saying, and two for a term of three years, it'll say three for a term of three years. So there's a motion made, the original motion, and now we need to figure out if it's going to be rescinded or if we're going to vote on it.
Okay, so it could also be a, well, I guess it couldn't, so. Okay, do you want to go forward with your motion, or in light of the discussion, wish to change your motion or rescind your motion?
No.
Well, it was a, do you want to do this, or do you want to do that?
I, I stick with the motion that I made.
Okay. So the motion is to specify that there will be seven members, and they will be, consist of, uh, members from each precinct. Oh, no, the, yeah, the motion was for the mayor to, I didn't even get that, authorize council members to appoint. So, it would be individual council members appointing the Parks and Recreation Committee as opposed to the whole council. Because the way it is now, it is the mayor appoints and council confirms.
Is that, is that, excuse me, is that what was said, really? Did you, I don't think she said that. What, what did you say exactly?
What I was, what I was asking is that, basically, to try to, um, put it on the floor, to have some input from the, um, from the community about this recreation, because there's a lot of people that, um, are concerned about our recreation department and what it has and what it does not have. So, for them to give us, um, to give some input, um, on this advisory committee, I think it would be great if they, if they decide what they want to do with it and, um, how, how it's going to go. Um, I think we should have one person from, um, each precinct to represent.
So your motion, I'm just going to help.
Councilman Williamson. Uh, your motion was to, uh, have council members appoint one person from each precinct to serve on the committee, increasing the number of, uh, from five to seven, uh, which is, which essentially takes away the mayor's authority to appoint the members of this committee. That's, that's the motion you made. And it was supported.
I don't think she meant, oops, excuse me, take away the mayor's authority, just us appoint, and then the mayor can. We, yeah, we approve it anyway, so I don't think she meant to take away this. But I think what she meant is so that we can get a variety of people with different opinions, experiences, and, um, yeah, so that the committee isn't just made up of people who don't. Yeah, I, I think I know where you're going, but, all right, thank you. Okay, we stated. Yeah, we stated your motion.
So, I would like to make a motion, um, for Two Dash Two Eight One, under Members, um, Part B, that, um, the mayor take in consideration of, um, each priest, someone from each precinct, um, to serve on this committee.
That's different from your, that was different from your original motion.
From five to seven.
Okay, so I would, I have a suggestion for you, if I could.
Sure.
Just rescind your original motion, because the way you stated your first motion, it made it so that council members were appointing members of the committee. And what you're saying now is that you would like the mayor to appoint seven people that are, you're saying, with representation, representation from across the city. And that's separate from what you said at the beginning.
Okay, so, we, we, we can give you a suggestion.
Always?
Um, okay, I'm going to use myself as an example. If I say, mayor, you know, I would like such and such to be on this committee, so here's my recommendation. That's, that's basically what I want. Now, how you put it in a form of words?
Well, excuse me. Can I?
Councilwoman Spicer?
Thank you. I think that, um, I, I don't know how to word this, but with that, the, we could, that the council has the option or privilege to make suggestions to the mayor. If somebody might not want to make a suggestion as to who you appoint, so. But, and some others might, some of the council members might, so I don't know how that fits in there.
My, my concern is not to have this board, this commission, to be substantially different from the other commissions we have. My, my concern is not to have this board, this commission, to be substantially different from the other commissions we have in the city. Okay, we have language in many of the boards that talks about residency within the city is either absolutely required, you have to be an elector of the city, or that, uh, a majority of the members be residents of the city as desired, or language like that. I think it's absolutely appropriate to put language in there, that the makeup of the board should reflect all precincts, all areas of the, of the city. Just the appointment and confirmation process, I think we should be consistent with all of the boards and commissions that we have.
Okay, so again, we're back at the amendment that was made by Councilwoman Lawler, that we actually change it from what it currently says to council members appointing. So we need to figure out if that, if you're going to pull that off the table and restate what you elected to say, or if we're going to vote on that.
I mean, I, I, I don't want to be rude, but I do want to include the public in this recreation.
And that's, to a large extent, is the purpose of having this committee, which is made up of residents and not the council, and not city employees, but it's residents, representatives of the community. That's one of the main purposes. Councilwoman Reed.
Before we got our illustrious city management, we had, had, had started to put a board like that together. And on there, we had, had Mrs. Ly, had, uh, one of the seniors, the lady that ran the senior center, Luann, we had her. We had Mr. Williams, who was over the rec department, we had, uh, Jim from Sterling, uh, Brooks and Brew, we, we, we had.
All across the city, all precincts represented. Okay.
We're still having, we're still in discussion on the amendment that Ms. Lawler made.
Your honor.
City Mayor.
If I could pose a question to the city attorney. Attorney Harkness, could you, could you remind us what the pow, powers of, or authority of the, the mayor are in terms of making appointments to boards and commissions? Is there any limitation, uh, placed in the charter? Really, the question I'm posing is, the, the question that, that's before the council right now, is that, um, is that legally permissible to place that limitation on the mayor's appointment powers?
Section five point four of the charter, subsection F, states that the mayor shall make all appointments subject to the prior approval of the council, unless any such appointment is required by law or by ordinance to be made by another officer or agency of the city. So the mayor makes all appointments subject to the prior approval of the council, but it can be modified by ordinance.
So my strongest recommendation is to remain consistent with the rest of the boards and commissions that we have.
I'm going to call the question on the amendment. Are people ready to vote on it? Sorry, I called the question. But we can vote to vote.
All right. So the amendment is, what we're voting on is whether or not the city council representatives are going to appoint members to the Recreation Advisory Committee, which is not in keeping with the charter, but.
I called the question, but nobody's commented yet.
All right, so, please read the roll. Uh, City Attorney.
So first of all, you're voting to end debate, then you're voting on the amendment.
Yes.
Okay.
Just to be clear.
Thank you.
So your first vote is whether or not to end debate and call the question.
And then the second one.
Is to vote on the amendment.
The second one is to vote the amendment. For amendment.
Correct.
So again, we're voting on whether or not to end debate. So all those in favor of any debate, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Now we're going to vote by roll, whether or not to have council members appoint the members of the advisory committee.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
No.
Reed?
No.
Smith?
No.
And Mayor Edgerton?
No. Okay. Councilwoman Williamson. City Attorney.
So now, now that we've gone through that, if I could, Mr. Mayor, just kind of give the council a rundown of what we've included, so, obviously, we've just talked about the, the discussion with the amendment of the five and seven, and the subsequent modifications in the term, but I want to highlight for the council that we mandated in there that all, all persons appointed to the commission must be residents of the city. The, um, duties of the commission are, are to provide advice to the manager and the city council to review the rec budget and make recommendations to the manager and the council each year, uh, make recommendations to the council on capital improvements relating to recreation, review and, and make recommendations on the recreation fee schedules, uh, for the rec director, city manager, and city council. Review potential recreation bond proposals and make recommendations to the city council and, um, make recommendations regarding, um, recreation programs. Meetings are at least six times a year, they're required to be consistent with the Michigan Open Meetings Act. The board is required to adopt its own bylaws, it's required to select a chair, vice chair, and a secretary. The members are not compensated. And that is basically it, because it is just an advisory commission.
Councilwoman Spicer.
Thank you. Uh, Attorney Harkness, did you say the members must be a city resident?
Correct, that's in, um, section two dash, two eight one, subsection A.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Williamson.
With respect to the session we just had, I wanted to amend the, uh, the ordinance, uh, under membership, uh, to increase it from five to seven and to make the subsequent changes in the, in the one year and three year terms. And then I'd also like to add a line under where, uh, subsection B, under two, two eighty-one, uh, that special consideration should be made by the mayor in appointments from all neighborhoods, precincts, uh, in the city. Just to kind of outline, you know, if we don't put it in writing, then it's not a priority, so I want to make sure that it's put in writing as a priority for future discussion if that ever becomes a problem. Yep, uh, that portion would say special consideration for members should be made in, uh, appointing from all neighborhoods and precincts across the city.
And you're increasing the number from five?
From five to seven, which will change the, what Cullen said about, uh, the one year, three year membership.
Yes, City Attorney.
If I could make a suggestion, um, I, I think instead of putting them in B, my suggestion would be under subsection A, where we say, they shall be residents of the city, maybe we say comma, and an effort shall be made that the, that the body be composed of all precincts of the city, because here's my concern, I mean, you want to be careful not to use mandatory language.
Yep.
Because you may end up having a precinct or two that just doesn't have anybody that wants to be on it, and then, you know, so as long as you've got permissible language in there, I, I, that would be my suggestion, and I think it's more appropriate to put that in subsection A if you put it in.
And that's my, we have a City Attorney.
Okay.
So I amended, I, I made that motion.
I don't remember, I can't repeat it for you.
Is there support for the motion?
Support.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Bingo, would you read the roll, please?
Councilmember Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
And Mayor Edgerton?
Yes.
All right, next item.
We don't have to vote on the main motion now?
Yeah. Still need to vote on the ordinance.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the ordinance as amended?
So moved.
Support.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Item G, request approval for Holland Park sidewalk improvement project, may I have a motion?
I move to table this item upon completion of the, of the sidewalk assessment.
To move to table this until after the sidewalk committee reports out, is there support for tabling?
Support.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Request approval, boards and commission appointments, Mr. Jonathan Narcon. Narcon, initial appointment to the Albion Economic Development Corporation, term due expire July first, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Narcon is here, present this evening, he's also the manager of the Marriott Hotel here in town, so, welcome. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Okay, discussion? Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you, did anyone resign, or did they turn in for this position?
Yes, Councilwoman Brown was removed from the board, and that's the position we're filling.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Narcon, and thank you very much for serving. Okay, next item, item I, request approval of legislative management contract with iCompass for thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, discussion. I asked the city manager to walk us through what this accomplishes.
Your honor, the, uh, city council is, uh, being requested to approve a contract, uh, with iCompass to provide a comprehensive legislative management system for the city, uh, that includes an agenda preparation, uh, component, board and commission member management, uh, minutes, uh, preparation component, uh, video integration, uh, so that our agendas and, uh, videos of the, of the meetings will integrate and, uh, will have, uh, links so that people can, can, uh, manage through the agenda itself and click on links and go directly to that point in the meeting on the video, um, and, uh, and some other components. Uh, the clerk and I, uh, looked at, uh, several companies that provide similar services. Uh, after reviewing those companies and you received the proposals from the other companies, uh, we were very confident that, uh, iCompass provided the most comprehensive solution for us. One item that came up, or one comment that came up on, uh, during the council meeting, uh, was the discussion on the fee schedule and making sure that, uh, the city manager is ushering through, uh, agenda items, uh, more diligently. I can tell you that the current practice is that department heads give their items currently to the city clerk, and, and they're put on the agenda. This system will require approvals by, uh, certain, um, officials before items are placed on the agenda. Uh, the clerk and the city manager will get two required approvals. There will also be approvals required by, uh, the, um, finance director, treasurer, if it involves a financial issue, and some other review processes, so it'll take care of that, uh, that concern. One of many, but it's one more way for us to, uh, better manage our processes. The monies were included in the upcoming budget, uh, for this, uh, project, although there will be an amendment necessary, uh, because I believe the clerk had plugged in ten thousand dollars for this project. Uh, the first year cost is thirteen thousand five hundred, um, and then, uh, in the, in subsequent years, it would be twelve thousand five hundred dollars. City Attorney Harkness, uh, just like another matter, um, expressed concerns that there was no expiration on this contract. We are recommending a three-year contract for this, um, so every three years, we will review this contract, make sure that the services that are being provided still meet our needs. So we are recommending, uh, a contract for, um, January first, two, uh, twenty twenty through December thirty-first, uh, twenty twenty-two. That's three years, right?
Councilman Williamson.
So where does, so where does this contract save you money? So we're, so we're, um, we're going to spend thirteen thousand two hundred and eighty dollars, and some of the things that are provided by iCompass, we, we tend to manage or piecemeal ourselves as a city, so where does this save money?
It, it has the potential of saving us money in terms of, uh, migrating from paper packets to electronic packets. So in terms of, uh, reducing our printing costs, our copier costs. But the cost savings is really going to be in terms of productivity. This is going to reduce the staff time that is necessary to prepare the agenda packets, to prepare the minutes, and allows us to focus more of our time on other workload issues.
Councilman Smith.
So thirteen thousand two eighty to initiate, uh, twelve, five per year for two years afterwards, if we have a three-year contract. Thirty-eight thousand two hundred and eighty dollars in three years. To go paperless is basically what we're doing.
To go, to go paperless and free up staff time to focus on other workload matters.
Councilman Williamson.
So I just want to add, just my own experience with, um, software management systems that help man, again, my experience is outside of the municipal realm, this is my first city situation, but, um, this is actually a very low-cost, uh, solution to some of the, um, management stresses of the department heads in the city itself. Some software packages or relationship management packages can run twenty-five, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars a year for very limited services. Um, this, so my, my, I didn't take issue with the price, I just wanted to know where were the, uh, cost savings or productivity incentives that are going to change? And what is that going to look like in three years if we're going to spend the money? I'm not generally opposed to spending money to improve efficiency, um, I just wanted to know where we're going to see some of that, because, you know, the, the old meeting, recording meetings on YouTube, well, we do that, and someone's, is there, you know, is there a cost savings that person that I didn't do anymore because there's a service that does it, you know, so I just am trying to figure out what are the, I was given the opportunity to provide us with some, uh, some perks to why moving to the system is important, um, and maybe we'll have to just learn about those as we go. But it's really good that we're moving in the direction of the twenty-first century to have a system that's going to hopefully manage it up. Well, my question is, are council members part of this process as well? Will we be able to see these dashboards and look in and see, uh, what you guys are doing and what's kind of coming down the queue?
Yes. Actually, you're going to be very, and a very important part of this, uh, because each of you will have your own accounts, and you will log into the system, and you will be able to pull up your own agenda packet, you will be able to re, review it, make your own notes. Those notes cannot be seen by anybody else because it's account-driven, so, so they're private to your own account. And, uh, there's also, uh, a tablet app that connects to this, and part of what we would like to see, if council authorizes this, is for us to purchase tablets that we will provide not only to the city council, all of our boards and commissions, this system will, will provide management of all of our boards. Everything. So, uh, so we can, uh, provide tablets, all of the board and commission members can use those tablets, log in, access their accounts, view their packets, view their own notes, because at your home computer, you can also log in, make your notes, and then when you come here and a tablet's waiting for you, you can log in here, and if you log into your account, your notes pop up. So, so it is a good system. I do want to say, and I, I understand some of the concerns about the cost, when you look at twelve thousand five hundred dollars a year, that doesn't, doesn't even begin to scratch the surface of the cost of a full-time employee. And we, our employees are, are really. And we, our employees are, are really carrying the workload of probably two to three people. Utilizing technology rather than adding additional positions is a huge cost savings to us over the long term. And if you look at the workload that goes into preparing an agenda packet, Jill can, can tell you all of the, the myriad things that she has to go through to prepare an agenda packet. From receiving a request that something be placed on the agenda item, on the agenda list, to receiving the materials, whatever backup materials, making sure those are organized into the packet. She does all that manually right now. Not to mention the fact that right now, we don't know, we don't have a good idea of what's in the queue for a month from now or two months from now. This system will allow each department head to plug in their items at any time, assign it to a meeting date, and upload all of their attachments. And so it sits in the queue until that meeting and we can do a report at any time to see what's, what's on the meeting agenda for a month from now, two months from now. It allows us to, and so what the clerk has to do to prepare the agenda is simply drop and drag the items that have been entered by everyone else, drop and drag into the appropriate place on the agenda, and, and then click publish. The system will automatically upload the agenda packet to the website. It'll automatically distribute the packets to the board and commission members. It will distribute the packet to the public portal as well as to anybody who may have a subscription to receive the packets. The system will do that automatically. The clerk no longer has to do that, any of that work. And don't even get started with the board and commission management and trying to make appointments to boards and commissions. The mayor can talk to that and the, the long drawn-out process that it is. This, this system will, will allow people to file applications. They'll be stored in the system. The mayor will have access to be able to review those at any time. It tracks each board member's service for their entire career as a board member. And if they change from one board to another, it continues to track all of their service. So we can do a report on any board or commission member. And then the minutes component. It makes it much, much easier for the clerk or a recording secretary to prepare the minutes of those meetings. They can actually prepare those minutes in real time while the meeting is going on. So I, I can't tell you enough about how streamlined this system will allow us to be in what we do with, with our entire meeting management.
Councilman Williamson.
I do want to take note that the other, this is the highest bid of the three that we received. And so I just, and one of them was as low as less than four thousand a year. So, you know, I don't, did iCompass pay you? Because you just sold me an iCompass. But, but what was the deciding factor? Because it is the most expensive, we generally don't tend to do that.
Because the, the other companies did not offer all of the components. They may have the agenda packet component and minutes component, but they didn't have some of the other components that, that iCompass offers. Yes.
So my question for you, city attorney, is the language in the charter, is it, does it apply to issuing one of these contracts? Because I think the language in the charter that I was familiar with, so we will pick the, the lowest bid responsible bidder, lowest bid from the responsible bidder.
But there, yeah, I mean, it does say that, but there's exceptions, and I'm trying to find that. It's actually not in our charter. It's in a, it's in an ordinance.
Okay.
Just bear with me for a minute here. So contracts, except as otherwise provided, shall be awarded to the lowest bidder in deter- in determining the lowest responsible bidder, in addition to the price purchasing agent or the council shall consider ability, capacity, and skill of bidder to perform the contract and provide the service required, whether they can perform it within a specified period of time, character integrity, reputation, quality of performance, previous contracts, previous and existing compliance with laws and ordinances, efficiency of financial resources, quality, availability, adaptability of the supplies for contractual services, ability to provide future maintenance and services in the subject area, number and scope of conditions attached to the bid. When the award is not given to the lowest bidder, a full and complete statement of the reasons for placing the order elsewhere shall be prepared by the purchasing agent, which is the manager, and filed with the other papers relating to the transaction. So basically, you have to justify why you're not going with the lowest bid based upon one of the previous factors that I've outlined. So if there are basically aspects to the services that are being provided by this bidder that aren't being provided by another bidder, that would be, that would be a basis.
So which specific services or features that iCompass provides is not provided by the others that you consider essential?
I would, I would say that quality of the, of the services being provided and the adaptability.
Councilman Williamson.
When you read through the packet, just for example, the third bid in actually doesn't even allow for the amount of boards or commissions we have. And it is limited and certain things. So again, I just bring it up because it's really the opportunity to share why, why this is important. And be able to justify it. I think every opportunity we can get to share, because a lot of the bidders spending their money on it, is important. I mean, I'm really looking forward to know paper about our management system. You know, data is always important, and that will tend to bring data from all over the city together. It's definitely important. I was just giving you the opportunity to share why this is important.
Do you have any personal experience with either, either one of the three bids that you got? I mean, with that company, with that application?
I have experience with Asella, which was bought out by Granicus, I believe. And Asella was a pretty good system, but it had its limitations. It was clunky. And, and Granicus too, it's a, Granicus actually was the original company providing these types of services to municipalities. And, and so they were the, and legis- or I think. They were the, they were the gold standard, but they have kind of slipped behind a little bit in, in their technology, unfortunately. And I think iCompass has now surpassed them.
Councilman Williamson.
I had another question just about the iCompass, and well, this management system in general. If you didn't know before you got here, you do know now that there are certain entities in the city that enjoy FOIA or enjoy the pleasure of the use of FOIA. So when we talk about the online management system here, like if I have an account and I take notes, are my notes subject to FOIA? What, what is the delineation between what is public and what is not on an offline system like that?
I think FOIA addresses personal notes, but, personal written notes, but the attorney is the one that can answer that question.
You know, I think it depends on the context. I think it's going to be, have to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis. Certainly, I, to a certain extent, software systems that are paid for and maintained by the city are going to be subject to FOIA, but the manager does have a point. Certain things of a personal nature are not going to be subject to FOIA. So realistically, what's going to have to happen is if we receive a FOIA and that might include councilperson notes, it will get reviewed by my office and determine whether or not it meets an exception to FOIA in conjunction with the clerk's office.
That's important. There's a lot of FOIA involved in the last three years.
I can't remember. We haven't had a lot in the last few months.
Okay. Any other debate questions? Okay. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Reed. And Mayor Atchison.
Yes. Okay. Request approval for acceptance of a thirty-five-hundred-dollar grant from Marshall Community Foundation for the Albion Marshall Connector. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Support.
Okay. This is to provide gap funding of thirty-five-hundred dollars. Anything else you wish to enlighten us on?
Just that you are being requested to accept the grant funding award from the Marshall Community Foundation for thirty-five-hundred dollars. It is for gap funding assistance for the Albion Marshall Connector, a public transportation system. My understanding is that this, this is a routine process for us because the, the program does tend to have its, its budget shortfalls every year. And, and you're being asked to approve the grant agreement between the city and, and the foundation and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement.
There are no matching funds involved.
No, we, our contribution toward the program is already leveraging this grant.
Any other questions or comments? Councilman Williamson.
I just want to say that the exec director for the Marshall Community Foundation is fabulous, her name is Shannon Tierney. Between her and our local community foundation executive, Director Tim Kraus, we are very lucky to have these two entities serving our communities and sharing in those resources to make sure that we can provide transportation to people for vital appointments, including hospital visits, doctor's appointments, and sometimes even getting to work on a day-to-day basis. I'm just really happy that the Marshall Community Foundation chooses to continue to support Albion and the region in this, in this transportation situation. So again, thank you to the Marshall Community Foundation, and I hope we go ahead and pass this.
Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you. I just want to kind of echo off of Councilmember Williamson about this grant. I, I just want to thank them because they've been very supportive over the last couple of years that they, Albion Marshall Connector has been up and running. So I just want to personally, personally thank them for this grant and their continued support.
Councilwoman Spicer.
Thank you. I just want to add and echo Councilwoman Williamson and Lawler that this is such an asset to the community. I know of several, many people that use the connector, and the cost is very affordable for them. So it's a great asset to our community as well as to Marshall community. So, and I just want to thank them for it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Migno, please read the roll.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison.
Yes. Okay. Next up, future agenda items. Councilmembers have specific future agenda items they want on the next meeting or in, in January. Councilwoman Williamson.
I want to make sure that we add the charging of the committee for, or the, the working group for the sidewalks to that first meeting.
Uh, city attorney.
We put together a draft of the Arts Commission thing. The manager's looking at that right now, but we should have that ready for the first meeting in January.
Councilman Smith.
I'd like to be sure we bring back the, the fee, the fees.
Fee schedule.
Schedule. Readdress that with the change that we had discussed earlier.
All right. Any other future agenda items council wishes to identify at this point? Okay. City mana- or public comments. Persons wishing to address city council, please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Proper decorum is required. Please do not impugn the character, motives, or integrity of any other member of the city or residents, the public, city employees, or members of council.
Sonia Brown, 713 Orchard Drive. First of all, I would like to say for the Recreation Advisory Commission, I would hope that you would reach out to some youth to be represented on that commission. I think the young people in Albion are crying for recreation programs, and I would, I would like to see their voices be at the table in, in discussing what happens with recreation. Secondly, the EDC appointment. Jonathan, I know him. He, he's always been very pleasant, hard worker at the hotel. However, I do want to point out that I don't believe he resides or owns property here in Albion. And I know that was an issue under former Mayor Brown, that appointments, especially and specifically to the EDC, were Albion residents and owned property in Albion. So I just wanted to point that out. Lastly, I wanted to point out that at the last council meeting, there was a strong police presence in this back room. And anyone in attendance in that meeting saw several police officers back here. To my knowledge, there is no policy that exists on when police officers or more police presence is asked to attend meetings. So I'm wondering what's the criteria and who's approving that discriminatory action? And I say that because-
You use the term discriminatory, so you're impugning the actions of the people that were here.
Please stop interrupting me and allow me to-
You're not impugning anybody's integrity or motives.
As I'm, this is the most democratic portion of any meeting. As long as I don't speak on foreign policy, I'm allowed to comment. Thank you. I am, and what I'm pointing out is that I don't know what criteria is used. Is it more than fifteen people in the audience, more than twenty people, what the audience looks like? But I don't know what criteria is used in order to decide police presence needs to be here at these meetings. And I call it discriminatory because there's no policy in place. So whose discretion is it, is it open to? Who, who is deciding we need police here and what's the criteria being used? It's my point. Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening?
David Gilbert, I'm your county prosecutor. I try to come down and see you guys at least once a year. If you have questions about what's going on in the county level, if you have questions of what's going on in my office, why I'm doing the things I'm doing, why I'm not doing the things you think I ought to be doing, let me know. Same thing with everybody in our, in our county. I have an open-door policy, and I answer my phone, and if I'm not there to take the call, I return the phone call. So if you have any questions, feel free. If people have Albion questions, feel free. Just give me a call. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert.
You have my two minutes and thirty-one seconds.
I'll be very brief tonight. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, city manager McClary, clerk Domingo, the folks that are here this evening and the folks watching this evening, good evening. Gary Tompkins, your current county commissioner. I'll be incredibly brief this morning. I just have, or this evening, excuse me. It's been a long day. I apologize. Yeah, it's been a long day, exactly. I just want to say the other night at our last county commission meeting, we approved an authorization for the county treasurer to set up a reserve account within a delinquent tax revolving fund designated for the Cowan County Land Bank and appropriate up to five hundred thousand dollars from the land revitalization fund to complete various demolitions and rehab of properties. And the reason why I include that is because the included, included in those listed properties are 501 North Marion Street, i.e. Union Steel. So that's a good, very good thing. We're going to see that action take place in 2021, as well as 131 North Superior Street. Some of you may or may not know that, that area. That'd be the building right next to Dickerson's Music Company. It's the old tattoo area. It's in serious trouble. It needs some real work done to it. We would hate to have that actually be demolished and then have an open gap there. So there's being money put to that so that we can save that building from being demolished. That's a good thing. And then, on the other hand, too, also, we're looking at rehabbing properties, not necessarily just tearing down properties just for the sake of doing it. So there are two properties next year that will be on the list of the rehab. 707 Prospect Street, as well as 111 West Elm Street. Both of those will be getting roofs replacements. So the hope is to actually rehab those properties so that they're able to be resold and utilized as opposed to just being demolished just for the sake of demolishing. So that's a good, that's certainly good. So I'm glad to see that we're looking at it not only just simply, rather than just leveling everything, but giving an opportunity to rehab some of the homes that we have here. So that's a good thing. And other than that, can you believe that? I would have been under three minutes today anyway. I just want to take- I just want to take, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. No, you're good, you're okay, absolutely. I...
Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you. You said there was a, a property on Prospect that will be rehabbed?
Yep, 707, right there at the corner, right there. You know what I'm, I don't know if you know what I'm...
That's my precinct, so...
I was going to say, I know, yep, 707, it'd be right there.
Is it by the curb or by High Street?
Yeah, it's kind of like where the curb is at, it's like right there, it's the house right there, it's that first house after you come off. Anything else? All right, I just want to take the opportunity to wish each and every one of you, as well as everybody watching, a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And we'll be seeing you folks in the next decade, interesting enough. Yeah, isn't that crazy? I know, absolutely. But it's always a pleasure to be with you folks, and I hope you all have a wonderful holiday with your families. All right, thank you very much.
City Manager, I believe it's your report.
Your Honor, the council has received the city manager's report dated December 11th. I provided you with a summary of recent meetings I've attended. I gave you an update on the budget preparation. The Albion Community Gardens Property Assessment, that case did go to the Michigan Tax Tribunal, and the, the administrative law judge handling that case issued a recommended opinion that Albion Community Gardens be determined to be a nonprofit charitable organization eligible for tax exemption. And there is a certain timeframe for the tax tribunal itself to either accept that recommended opinion, modify it, or reject it. So, I haven't heard the final determination. I, I don't anticipate there would be a change to the opinion, but if there is any other decision, I will make sure the council is made aware of it. I provided you with an update on the Irwin Avenue Reconstruction Project, and the fact that our DPS Director and Engineer were scheduled to give a presentation last Friday to the public during, I think it was during your precinct meeting, Counselor, and to answer questions from citizens about where we're going from here with the Irwin Avenue project. I addressed some background information on the sidewalk program fund that we discussed earlier tonight. The, I noted for you that I had a meeting with the county, and, and we have agreed to present to City Council an extension of the recycling center agreement on a month-to-month basis. I am still waiting for the contract addendum from, from the county. I anticipate we will receive that in time for your first meeting in January. It, our discussion was that we would migrate away from the recycling drop-off center services. Our solid waste contract is up the end of March. We need to talk about, in the first meeting in January, actually, about what we want to include as far as services in the solid waste contract. One of those items that we need to be considering is curbside recycling services. And our current waste hauler indicated that the cost would, per household per month, would be very nominal to add that service. And we will have further discussions on that in January. But it was clear that the county wanted to migrate away from the current arrangement that we have, and, and we respect that decision on the part of the county. I provided some background information for you on an injury claim that we received, and that that claim has been forwarded on to our insurance carrier for a final determination. And I highlighted for you some upcoming agenda items. Once we have the repairs done on the elevator, we'll be presenting that information to the City Council on that emergency purchase. We are still waiting for documentation from MDOT on the Transportation Economic Development Category A Grant for Clark Row, Clark Street, North Clark Street. And as soon as I have that documentation, it will be on your agenda for further discussion and consideration for acceptance. We have an administrative policy on paid medical leave that needs to come before council for approval, that will be on your January agenda. And as you can see, my anticipation was that the fee schedule was going to be on the January meeting, first meeting agenda in January, because I had not yet received it, but, but it was on this one instead. Council needs to begin preparing for discussion on the Oprah District Establishment and Tax Abatement Applications for Downtown. For those of you who may not be familiar with Oprah's, it's Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act, and is part of the redevelopment efforts that are going on downtown. I wanted to have further discussions with EDC Executive Director DePraise before, before this showed up on the council agenda, and I want to make sure that we have a thoughtful and open discussion on this program and these products before council takes final action. I am meeting with Ms. DePraise later this week to continue those discussions. We anticipate that the rental inspection and certification ordinance and program will be on either your first or second meeting agenda in January. We completed our committee work on this. And the recreation, the Recreation Commission ordinance, the, actually, the second reading will be on your next agenda. And I already noted the recycling center agreement. We did receive a request from a resident to purchase certain city-owned property. I'm in the process of gathering information about that property and, and why it may or may not be important to the, to the city and to the community. I can tell you generally that my position on request to purchase city property is that if it is a developable lot, we should be thinking very carefully about whether we sell off that property. We should instead be trying to promote infill development to grow our tax base. And that's all I have tonight, Your Honor. Oh, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everyone, have very happy and safe holidays.
The, the elevator here at City Hall, what is broken? Are we waiting on a part?
We are waiting on a part, and they also had to pull certain permits to be able to do that type of work. So, we're waiting on both those items.
Do you have an estimated time of repair?
I do not, and, and I, when I talked to Director Phillips late last week, he did not yet have a firm date as well. So, we want to get those repairs completed as quickly as possible. We want to make sure that the second floor of City Hall is accessible to everyone, and we apologize for the inconvenience. I don't think we realize just how much we rely on something like an elevator until it's not working for us. So, we're trying to get that done as quickly as possible, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor and Councilmember comments, councilmembers? Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. It, more of a question, our street lights, how, how do we go about getting those changed to LED lights? And just who do we need to talk to, or should that be an agenda item? Like I said, it's just really a question.
If you, if you have questions about how to go about the process, probably the first step would be talking to Director Phillips and inquiring with him about what the process would be. If there is interest in council, I'm moving forward with a comprehensive project to maybe do another phase of LED light installation. That can be an agenda item.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Williamson.
Thank you again to council for voting me and giving me confidence in the position of Mayor Pro Tem. I want to say thank you to all of you. Also, I want to say welcome to Alston, to council. I know he's been here for two months now, but thank you so much, well-known for this, for joining, and I appreciate the work that we do for the council, and everyone a happy holiday. I know everyone's excited to hang out with their families they haven't seen, and I appreciate working with all of you.
Councilman Smith.
I just wanted to extend my thanks to the members of the council for their, their acceptance of me in this chair and for helping me make a smooth transition in. I will do my very utmost and my very best to support each and every one of you in the endeavors that you're making as well. And Councilman Williamson, congratulations on Mayor Pro Tem. I appreciate your, your knowledge and your diligence as far as parliamentary procedures go, and I will support you in every step of the way. To my constituents, thank you very much for your support. I appreciate everything that you've done for me in getting me here. I promise not to let you down. I will be your voice in this chair. And Gary, by golly, have a Merry Christmas, brother. Enjoy the New Year, and to everyone out there as well. Thank you very much.
Okay, so I'll echo everybody else's sentence, but have a very good Christmas, nice holidays, and thank you, Councilwoman Williamson, Mayor Pro Tem, for agreeing to step up and do that, and thank you for doing the same, but appreciate that. We have lots of work to do in 2020, but I think it's really going to be a very, very good year. So, do you have final comments?
I, I have one. I apologize. I have to express my sincere appreciation to Corinne and to Lynn for the wonderful work you did for the employee. I, I can't tell you how special that made the holidays for me, and I'm sure for everyone else who attended. Thank you so much. We, we appreciate everything that you do.
You're violating our rules by applauding.
She deserves that.
Yes, she does, thank you. I was going to comment on that, that you put a lot of work into that, and it was very much appreciated, you did a very good job. And to our illustrious City Attorney, enjoy time with your family, and we'll see you after the New Year. And Mr. Domingo, you do the same. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to excuse absent councilmember.
Oh, thank you, thank you. May I have a motion to excuse our absent councilmember?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now may I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.